Good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Urbana City Council. It's Monday, September 18th, 2017. Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmember Zamanz.
Here.
Brown. Hazen.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the Tuesday, September 5th council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Aaron. Any additions or corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Those minutes are approved. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Is there any public input? Dave Monk?
One one five North Market, Champaign. I've been talking to Bill and the berms of the North Lincoln Extension are getting ready to be planted. It may not happen until October, but it's a number four mix, which is a grass mix. And I would dearly like to see some broad leaves in there. You can get a mix that's 12 broad leaves, which are rough and tough ones. You get a little bit more sensitive when you get 24 or 36 species out of what would normally be about 100 species. But it would perhaps mean a change of order or something like that if the T is involved. But it would be a contribution to the Prairie cause, which seems to be coming back. And I think you have a population of people who are sympathetic to doing that. And so I'm here just to encourage you to think about some broad leaves in that mix.
And what was the plant mix again? Is there a name for that plant mix?
Oh, you would have to go to someone like Prairie Moon that provides that sort of seed. And they would ask you what sort of habitat you want to plant in, so it's not got a name.
Okay.
Or they might have wetland, dry land, different ones. But it would involve some expenditure. Thanks very much.
Thank you. We have a card from Bishop King James Underwood. He does not wish to address the council, but asks to put into the record that they are continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. Does anyone else wish to address the city council? Okay. We'll move on to reports of standing committees. Eric Jacobson chaired the committee of the whole.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I will move passage of ordinance number 2017-09-051 and ordinance amending Schedule I of Section 23-172 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, establishing curb loading zones on certain streets, namely Goose Alley.
I'll second.
Seconded by Dennis. Are there further discussion?
Just me.
Dennis?
Just want to thank the staff for extending the loading zone time to 20 minutes. I think it's more equitable and useful for the those that were unloading in the Goose Alley.
Any other discussion?
Okay, on behalf of the committee.
We need to vote?
Oh, I guess we do need to vote, okay.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmember Zamanz.
Yes.
Brown. Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
That motion passes.
Now, on behalf of the committee of the whole, I move passage of ordinance number 2017-09-052 and ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23-183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, namely Division Avenue, Thompson Street.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dean Hazen. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmember Zamanz.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
On behalf of the committee of the whole.
Motion passes.
Motion passes, okay, yeah. Got it. On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move passage of Resolution Number 2017-09-061R, Resolution Approving an Emergency Solutions Grants Program Subrecipient Agreement with Crisis Nursery.
Second.
Okay.
That was seconded by Jared?
Yes.
And I believe Kelly Murkowski wishes to update us on that?
Yes, I just wanted to let you know that I made changes to the memo, the resolution and the agreement regarding Council Bill Brown, his noted errors. So I made those changes. And I have the copies of the memo that I placed in all your seats, so if there's any questions about anything.
Mary Alice?
Can you just give us a quick summary of what you updated?
What I, there was a.
This was just put on our desk, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
So what I did was, under the fiscal impacts, I changed the crisis nursery amount from nine one six zero to nine thousand seven hundred and sixty, because there was a $600 difference. And then in the resolution, also, there was a change that was made. And then in, it was on page two of the agreement, changing the matching funds and the grand award to the $9,760. So those are the changes that I made.
Thank you. Any other questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmember Zamanz.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
That motion passes.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move passage of Resolution Number 2017-09-062R, Resolution Approving an Emergency Solutions Grants Program Subrecipient Agreement with United Way of Champaign County, New Covenant Fellowship Church and Faith United Methodist Church.
Second.
Seconded by Aaron. Are there any questions or discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmember Zamanz.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
That motion passes.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move passage of ordinance number 2017-09-053 and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 9.5, Article 2, relative to raffles.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dennis. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmember Zamanz.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
And Wu.
Yes.
That motion passes.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move passage of ordinance number 2017-08-049 and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapters 1 and 14, regulating special events.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mary Alice. Any further discussion?
Chapter 1. Yep.
Mary Alice?
I just, and I should have Googled this, I apologize. I was just wondering if you could translate the Latin for me here on Section 1459 enforcement, prima facie evidence of the commission. What does that mean?
What does prima facie mean?
Yes.
It's more or less a civil version of probable cause. In other words, if you lay out all the facts of a case that, you know, a violation requires proving of certain elements. And normally, in a case, when you lay out facts, not just conclusions, but facts to support each element of a charge or a claim, then you have made out a prima facie case and the burden of proof shifts. It's not the same as a criminal type situation, though. That's, you have to prove a criminal case, as we all know, by reasonable doubt. A civil case, by preponderance of the evidence, which is basically 50.1% of the scales weighing in favor of proof of the conduct alleged wrongful.
Thank you. Any other questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmember Zamanz.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Wu.
Yes.
That motion passes.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move passage of Resolution Number 2017-08-059R, Resolution Regarding the Release of Closed Session Minutes for the Period Ending August 28th, 2017.
Second.
Seconded by Aaron. Any discussion? Charlie?
Mayor, councilmembers, I passed around a slight correction to Schedule C. I found, I've found seven meetings worth of tapes and a set of minutes that were already typed up and prepared as well that I've now accounted for. So there are three sessions not accounted for to date, though I have done a fairly extensive search in the, through tapes and whatnot, so I'm not going to hold my breath on these last three.
Thank you for your very thorough efforts over the past few months.
Thank you.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmembers Zamanz.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
And Wu.
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you very much, Sharon Jacobson.
Okay.
We have one more input card from the public. Michael Kilkolen. Is this a presentation?
Very short, just five slides.
Okay, you have five minutes.
Everyone, I'm Michael Kilkolen.
Do you speak into the microphone?
Can you sit or not? You may. Be so formal. Okay. We forgot the podium, just a table to sit at. Hello? Okay, yes, some of you are very familiar faces and a few of you are new, but my name is Michael Kilkolen and I am on the Sister City Committee with Dennis and we do our three sister cities. And I am here to announce that we are planning a trip to our Tionville, France city. So just very briefly, we have the Sister Cities program, about the citizenry, making relations internationally, but on the, for citizen diplomacy rather than the government agencies doing it. And with the idea that people getting to know each other will become friends and will create collaborative teamwork and projects. And when issues come up, we can say, hey, we know people in this country or that country, you know, and it's supposed to be more supportive for future for peace and projects. In 2014, we had a Tionville with Urbana and we have two others, Zomba, Malawi and at the Haizhi District in Guangzhou, China. So for a Tionville portion, we officially signed the agreement in 2014 when Laura Pressing, the mayor, and several other councillors and the community went over there to Tionville. And then in September 2015, the Tionville officials came over and visited us and we hosted. And now it's our turn to go back to France and we're hoping for like every, every year back and forth, you know. Partly where is Tionville? So it's about a half an hour south of Luxembourg and it's between Paris and Stuttgart. It's almost in the midway point and that still did not show very big. I'm sorry about that. But it is about three hours or so away from Paris by high speed train. And we are going to plan to go in November this year. So we are inviting the public, anyone of the city council and the mayor, anyone that's interested to join me. I will already be in France. I'm going to go for three weeks and I'm still working out the exact dates with Tionville, but we're looking for the week of the American Thanksgiving because we want to try to see perhaps maybe some families or the high school kids or college kids. We're trying to get something going with an art show or video making and things like that that are geared towards the youth. So we're still working on these details. But right now, we want to give advance notice that we are arranging, I've got my plane tickets now, so we would like anyone to think about going. And you are welcome to join us or your families or friends. Please let them know that I'm going to go. Okay, so there's my, oh, three minutes. So basically, there's a little information from our, from the news gazette about our visit previously, so people can look up a few sources on the news gazette, the city of Tionville's website, sistercities.org, Wikipedia, of course, Google Maps. And my personal email is here that people can contact me directly to talk about trip details or dates and to sign up so that when I have more information, I can respond and let people know. And most people do arrange to add a few extra days. We're looking about four days in Tionville, but we're not sure at the beginning or the end of the week, but most people can add on whatever other cities they want. The main point is all participants have to pay for their own expenses and their own arrangements and this is not a taxpayer-funded agenda. So if there's any questions about our sister cities or my trip in November.
Dennis?
Yeah, I just want to thank Michael for coming and making the presentation. He's really our lead agent to maintain our Tionville contacts because Mike speaks fluent French and I don't. And I remember Mayor Pressing remembers some high school French. So maybe there's a person here on council who would like to go practice their French or other people in the community who would like to join Michael. And when we get details from the city about, they'll probably suggest convenient housing and probably a program. We're trying to set that up, but we're, have an attempt to at least go for a couple of days and connect with them again. When they were here last, they went to an American football game and they loved it. It was one of the U of I games. And they actually talked about having a football, an American football exchange through the schools. So we haven't done an exchange like that with students, but I mean, it's something that we'd like to work on maybe in the coming year.
Aaron?
Bonjour, messieurs, merci.
Oh, bien, merci, merci.
I need to work on my French, so. Look, I'd like to know how much, you know, if you could share with the public who may be interested in going, what is the cost for something like this?
Oh, yeah. Generally, most airline round trip tickets probably going to be in the 600 to 800s range still, if you reserve fairly early like now. Personally, my ticket was 471 last week, but I do transportation planning and travel journey consulting, so I was able to get a good fare still.
And that's round trip?
Yeah, round trip, baggage included, taxes, fees included. I got 471, but that's because that's my job. But this is where, on a personal level, I can assist anyone with travel arrangements. I certainly, I would not want to pay a thousand, so I'm not going to guide anyone to that, you know, unless you wait till November to book it. But if we book in September, even maybe early October, you should still be able to get in the, probably in the 600s or so, 600 to 800s range.
And the, as far as your housing and accommodations while you're there?
Oh, okay. Can't quite speak officially yet, but generally, the way it has worked is that the days of the official visits in the cities, like Tionville took care of those housing and public dinner events and in Urbana, when the Tionville wall came here, we took care of those expenses as well. And local transport was usually provided here by the MTD and over there by their, by their system. Other, other hotelery stays, it depends if you're going to stay over, you know, for a few extra days in Paris and if you're going to do like a Marriott style or if you're going to do the Accor, which is part of like Red River and Motel Six in America, but they have chains over there that buy the same headquarters company that are, and those are going to be cheaper. So hotelery can range anywhere from like 40 to 70 euros a night, all the way up to 200 plus. In Tionville, if people want to stay extra nights, I know where, there's a place where they're about 40, but they're about a 10 minute walk from downtown. But the Mercure, which is right across from the city hall, was like in the 80s, 80s to 90s most of the time unless it's a special event or a suite or something.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Michael.
Thank you.
Reports of special committees. Okay. Reports of officers. I did want to acknowledge a couple of promotions and a retirement effective this week from, this is all from the fire department. Lieutenant Keith Chaffrath will be retiring effective September 20th. He's served the Urbana Fire Department for 28 years and nine months. Matt Ennis will be promoted to lieutenant. And Mike Janisch will be promoted to engineer. So I'd like to offer congratulations to them all.
One quick question for Bill.
Pardon? Aaron?
Yeah, just had a quick question for Bill, if that's possible. So when we were working on, and this speaks to the concerns that have been raised by Dr. Underwood and the folks in Dr. Ellis subdivision, I just wanted to make sure that I was crystal clear about something. What, the program that we have in place now says that any individual who has to fix their lateral going across, the reimbursement is how much?
I believe it's up to $5,000 and it covers the extraordinary expenses for backfilling and replacing pavement sidewalk in the public right of way.
So the, up to 5K would include that backfill or is it up to 5K and the backfill?
No, including backfill and it's basically street and sidewalk repair.
And these, the concern that is in the subdivision, are there other places in the city of Urbana who have the exact same situation? Or very similar?
I'm not sure if I know exactly what you're asking. What I understand the situation to be is residents there have expressed concern that their private sewer lateral on one side of the street may connect to a public sewer on the other side of the street, whereas the person that may live across the street has a shorter run to the public sewer. That is, yes, can, is in many places in the city of Urbana and quite frankly, throughout the United States.
And the program, you have to qualify based upon receipts or just showing the work that was done or something like that?
There is a review of the invoices by the contractors, correct? Which are typically a time and material and equipment type expense.
So everything has to be paid upfront and then there's a reimbursement?
Correct.
Basically, that's what it is?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And the scheduled date to bring a revision to that plan, I think is now, I think it's November, I believe. We've talked to the folks and I think that's a date that everyone's available.
Okay.
It's important, I can get the exact date, but it's November 13th, we believe, according to the clerk.
Thanks, Bill, appreciate it.
Since I'm here, I've got maybe one information announcement I should have brought forward, if I may. We did open bids last week for resurfacing the Vine Street underpass and they were very favorable bids and we're in the process of awarding a contract. So in probably a week or so, we'll be milling and resurfacing and doing the prep work on Vine Street. This would be from Maine just south of University Avenue. So there is a fair amount of curb and gutter and ramp work needed and some full depth pavement because of the condition of the pavement, but we hope to get all the work done before the snow flies. So be pushing up against that window of time period here in the weeks ahead, so. And this week, we have started, actually last week, we started on the North Lincoln Avenue resurfacing. So that's, starts a little bit south of Calarny by the Urbana Gardens restaurant area there and then goes north about a mile. It gets close to where we have our new project on North Lincoln Avenue. And speaking of North Lincoln Avenue, Wednesday, we plan to pour the last segment of concrete up there to tie into Olympian Drive, which is good news. And then the contractor, the paving contractor will put in the six foot asphalt shoulders, the full length. And there'll be some pipe under drain installation that will help to do water, any moisture under the pavements. And final grading and seeding is probably, as Mr. Monk said earlier, hopefully middle of October or so. So we're getting closer and weather permitting, we're going to get that wrapped up here pretty quick, so. So we have essentially a new pavement all the way from, to south of 74 up to Olympian Drive, so.
Excellent. Aaron?
So the, you said the job was just awarded to someone for resurfacing Vine?
Vine Street, yes, Cross Construction Company.
When did the bid go out for that?
The notice went out probably two weeks, 15 days ago or so and the bid opening was, I forget, last week? What kind of, Charlie? No, Thursday or Friday, I think. And we had two contractors that bid open road paving and Cross Construction Company.
So, and so this is a project that we're doing ourselves?
Yes, sir.
That we, and what's the cost on that one?
The little bid was around $350,000.
And when you put that out for bid, that goes out to, is there a particular list that you send that out to?
We always advertise in a newspaper. And then there's, once they see that, there's a lot of entities that asked to be on their bidder's list, if you will. And there's lots of subcontractors and others that ask for a not-for-bid portion of that to know if they, as a subcontractor or as a material supplier or whatever, can provide those services to the prime or general contractor.
So even subcontractors reach out to you when they see something like that?
Generally, not to us. It's typically to the general contractor. But they can ask for the not-for-bid portion of the plans and specs if they so wish.
And so, you know, I've been talking about this for a while, so is there a list that is being developed now of MWBEs that also get this notice? That there's a contract that, for instance, that went out 15 days ago?
I'm not so sure that there's a list per se. We're only aware of one such contractor, actually, so I believe he was notified. But I would need to check on that, so.
So I just want to make sure that I'm clear then. So when we send something out like this, even at this point, 15 days ago, it's going out in a newspaper and how else does it go out?
That's the official notification.
So, all right, but Bill, we've been talking about this for a long time, so there's no, so even the one individual that you, you're talking about that does this type of work here, that is a minority-owned contractor?
Right.
They got a, they got a notification directly from the city of Urbana?
I'd have to talk to my staff on that, I don't know the answer.
Is there anything inappropriate about that? If, for instance, Cross Construction, if there was a whole list of contractors who do this type of work, that you, you put it in the newspaper and then you sent an email to that entire list, is there anything inappropriate about that?
I don't think so.
So then if there was a list of minority women-owned and veteran-owned businesses, you could send them a direct email about that?
Probably, sure.
So the minority-owned women, black woman firm that you met about three weeks ago, did she get an email?
No, because that's an engineering consultant.
So they don't, you don't need engineers on a job like that?
No.
Okay.
Not in this particular case.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I also want to acknowledge the work of Sustainability Coordinator Scott Tess and our Sustainability Advisory Commission Chair Stacy Gloss for their work on hosting the events on Saturday, the Midwest Grows Green event, which encouraged and helped Omaha. the Midwest Grows Green event, which encouraged and helped homeowners learn about how to reduce pesticides on their lawn. And then in the afternoon, the electric car fair that was held in Lincoln Square, and both were very well attended. So it was, it was a really solid day of environmental issues and initiatives being looked at in Urbana. Okay, I'm, new business is two items. First is Resolution 2017-09-063R, which is a resolution of protest against a proposed map amendment to the Champagne County zoning map, 2200 East University Avenue rezoning. And Lori Pearson is going to present on this.
Thank you very much. So I put together a short presentation in part because I know there's some council members that have not perhaps gone through this process before, so I want to provide a little bit extra background. For those that have done this before, this is one of those things where we're asking you to defeat a resolution. So I'll just start with the recommendation right off. But what this is, is a county case. So the Champagne County is considering this rezoning. Now, the city has the right to protest certain county zoning actions. The first kind that the city can protest are zoning ordinance tax amendments. And the second kind is what's under consideration today are zoning map amendments or rezoning that are within the mile and a half of our boundaries, also known as the extraterritorial jurisdiction or ETJ. So if the city were to choose to protest, it would require the county board to have a vote of a super majority, so three quarters of the board, in order to approve the rezoning. So it's an important threshold, it's an important right that we have. We don't exercise it very often, however, the city has not protested any rezonings in the last 10 years. I think the most recent one is from 2005. So we do process these routinely, however, because every item that comes through within a mile and a half, we, we process through the city council and the plan commission. So there's your background and why we're here tonight. Specifically for this case, the Woodland Acres Mobile Home Park, it's located within that mile and a half extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city and they would like to expand. Now, this case is a little strange because initially, they came to the city and we were under the impression that they were not required to annex because of an agreement that we have with the sanitary district, which exempted some areas. We did a little more digging on that and we realized that that initial determination was in error, so they will need to annex in order to connect to the sanitary sewer. But by the time we made this realization, they were so far along in the county process to rezone that it really just made sense to continue that process, to finish it up. It was a very, a very long process since June, going through several meetings, a lot of meetings with the neighborhoods. There's been a lot of discussion about this case. It's at a point where I think most, most folks are satisfied. So we figured, we'll just let the county finish it up and then we won't have to take that on separately. So that is where we are in the process. Now, the yellow outlines are the three different parcels that belong to the mobile home park. The area, in areas, excuse me, in question for the rezoning are those two approximately outlined in red. So you can see underneath there, under the aerial, those, there's already mobile home parks in the area, particularly on the east. And then also on the west, some mobile homes within that area that are sought to be rezoned. This is a zoning map, which has a combination of both the county zoning as well as the city zoning. So I'll walk you through this if I can. This middle section here is county zone R5, which is appropriate for manufactured or mobile home parks. The section to the east here in the yellow is currently zoned in the county as R1, although as I mentioned before and as you saw in the aerial, there's already mobile home parks in that area. And then also, this section here to the west currently has county zoning of B2 for neighborhood business, but again, has mobile home parks there. So it seems as though the clearest thing to do is for the county to rezone this, to be a consistent zoning for the mobile home parks, in part to make the sections that are already have the mobile homes on them be conforming to existing zoning, as well as to allow an expansion. So the reason that the R5 zoning is most appropriate in the county is because it is the only county zoning that allows manufactured or mobile homes. And the county does require special use permits for those. It is also appropriate zoning from a city perspective because that county R5 zoning, should the city annex that property, automatically convert to the only district that the city allows mobile homes in, that being the AG or the Agricultural Zoning District. So really, if the county was not involved, if someone had approached us and wanted to do the same thing, we would say the only, the only district you can choose in the city is ag for this use. So it's, it makes sense from a county perspective because it's the only zone, it makes sense from a city perspective because it's the only zone that allows this use. So in addition to looking at the zoning, we also look at the comprehensive plan to determine whether or not we should recommend a protest. So the comprehensive plan, I have the future land use map for that area on the screen and I have approximated the areas that are sought for rezoning. The underlying orange there, where the mobile home park is, is designated as a future land use for multifamily. So as you can see in this future land use map, in 2005, when we did the comprehensive plan, we did envision this to be an entire mobile home park with consistent land uses there, that being multifamily. Therefore, the zone that is being proposed by the county is consistent with what we envisioned this area to be during the development of the comprehensive plan. So in essence, as I mentioned, the county zoning would help make the existing mobile homes be consistent with, with zoning, have, have the right kind of zoning. It would be the only zoning district where mobile homes would be allowed in both the county or if annexed, the city. It is also consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. When the plan commission considered this item on September 7th, because we do run these through the plan commission, they unanimously suggested that city council vote to defeat the resolution of protest. So as staff, we would also recommend that you defeat the resolution before you.
Any questions for Lori? Mary Alice?
So, so my, I have actually one question because we talked earlier and you were able to help me understand this defeat of a resolution. So my question is, if I look at the, the map of what is county and what is city, seems like we are slowly circling around and if we go through and do an agreement with them, they connect to the sewer and then they get annexed into the city. So my question to you is, at what point, I mean, if we circle around this entire area, we've got Beringer Commons on one side, to the north, where, you know, we have some area, at what point does it totally become the city?
Well, there are rules on annexation that you would need to totally surround, 100% surround something to force annex. And there's also limitations on how large that area could be. So this doesn't get to any point where we entirely surround anything, I don't believe. So there's no issue with immediate annexation, forced annexations or anything like that in the immediate future. Yes, it, the reason we have a comprehensive plan that goes out beyond our boundaries is because we do envision ultimately annexing a lot of these areas. So we plan for those and that's why we've planned for this area, because we did envision it to be part of the city at some point.
All right, all right, thank you. Did you have a question, Jared?
Yeah, I was just curious then what the motion is?
The motion? The motion would be a motion to defeat the resolution of protest number 2017-09-063R.
I'd like to make a motion to...
You can just say you moved.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Eric. Any further discussion? Charlie?
Okay, so the, just so I understand the direction this is going, the, the motion is to...
Defeat.
Defeat, okay, so...
Defeat the resolution of protest.
Okay, so, yeah, it sort of flips the way it's worded here. So, you know, sometimes it's to, you move it one way and you have to vote no. In this case, since you're moving to defeat it, you get to vote yes.
We want to vote yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
City council members, Ammons?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes. That motion passes. Final item of new business are three appointments. First is Reverend Robert K. Freeman, appointed to the Community Development Commission. He's the pastor at First United Methodist Church, which is the church right over here by Lincoln Square. To the MOR, Mixed Office Residential Development Board, Nancy Wadrego, she's currently on the plant commission and she will be the plant commission representative to the MOR board. And then for the police pension board, it's Shannon Clark. She's a CPA with a bachelor's in accountancy and studying for a master's in business administration. And her term would end May 31st, 2018.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? Do we need a roll call?
Voice.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, that motion passes. I have one last public input. This is from Eldress Melinda Carr. She doesn't wish to address the council, but wishes to express continued concern about Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues, issues equity and historical impact. And with no further business before the council, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.